This, I want to be respectful of your time and make sure we can get as much information out there to each other as we can. For those I have not met or reintroduce myself, my name is Matthew Rutler. I'm the COCA president as well as the camp director for Camp Happy Times here in New Jersey. And I also have the privilege of being a CIBS counselor at Magical Moments in Idaho, which is Region 7. What was it? Thank you all so much for being with us today on this call. This is our sixth regional town hall meeting. They have been extremely productive. And the amount of information that camps are sharing with one another is fantastic. So it's a really a great opportunity for us to get together. So just a few things, if you would be so kind, if you can stay muted during the call, unless you would like to share something or ask a question, that's just a way for us to keep the background noise down to a minimum. You will get copies of everything. I know a lot of folks are take notes and I encourage you to take notes, but just so you're aware, we will make sure that you receive copies of the pre-conference or pre-town hall survey, the post-survey that we're doing, as well as copies of this chat and access to the voice recordings of the town hall. So we'll give you as much information as we possibly can. We are also fortunate that Ryan Campbell from Happiness is Camping, also in New Jersey, has been attending all of our town halls and he has graciously have been taking copious amounts of notes. So we're very appreciative of that and to him. So also, if you are going to share something or ask a question, if you would be so kind as to say your name and camp, just so that for our note-taking, we would know who's who. So let's just jump right in. So the first slide that you're going to see is these five items, these items are things that have actually already come up, whether to myself, Jennifer, or Dawn, that camps are experiencing, or camps have had questions about. So these are the types of things that we're going to talk about today a bit. And then obviously, anything and everything else that you all would like to talk about. So what is a town hall? So the town hall, it's yours. While we do have an agenda, it's a very fluid agenda, meaning we will go in whatever direction we need to, based on what you all are asking and what you all need. It's all about your input because it's all about your campers and your camps. What it's not, we're not going to really dive deep into the effects of the coronavirus on us physically, just really more of its effects on our camps. It's not a lecture. I'm not going to be talking this entire time. I'm in no way an expert in the virus, but I am going to just help facilitate the conversation and move us along when we need to. It's not a time to be silent. So if y'all have something to say, please do, because that's how we learn, we learn from each other. So jumping in, the first topic we're going to talk about is the camp scheduling and operations. So you'll see between each topic, you'll see two slides. And for those who are not on the call, I'll obviously describe them. These are directly from the pre-conference survey that went out. So the first pie chart is all about the current state and local restrictions that our camps are facing. So for example, school closings is at 76%. Social distancing, 93%. The max number of people at an event, 91%. These are all things that are affecting our camps. The second bar graph is have camps needed to cancel event plans for any time period? The April is all the way up, you know, between anywhere between 70 and 90% canceled. May, between 40, excuse me, around 30 to 40-ish percent. And June, obviously much lower. And those who are in July and August, based on the survey, pretty much have not canceled. Well, since the survey, some have, but primarily they, the majority of those folks are in a wait-and-see pattern or wait-and-see moment, just so that they can wait and see what, you know, how this virus proceeds and how the, what the CDC says, et cetera, et cetera. So let's talk about a few things in terms of your camp scheduling and operations. Have you had to reschedule? Have you already canceled? What are some of the criteria that y'all are looking at to make those decisions or to guide your decision to do it? As well as if you need to reschedule, have you looked into relocating camps if that's necessary? The time commitment there? We can just really look at that first section to start with. So anybody has any comments regarding their camp scheduling and cancellations? That'd be, you can just jump right in.
I would like to know, I'm Faye from Camp Magical Moments. I would like to know of any of you who may have camps in June, what, where, what is your status at this point?
Hey Faye, this is Jennifer at Camp Make-A-Dream in Montana. We have decided that we're holding off till the end of April to decide on our June camps and then using a 30-day or more advance for sessions after that. So we've told people that we will be making a final decision on each session at least 30 days in advance, and that's mostly because we have so many people traveling. We have actually had to move three of our summer sessions, three of our nine, to a virtual platform because we partner with an organization out of New York City and they have made the choice to postpone and cancel all of their face-to-face programs, fundraisers, everything for the rest of the year, given their location. So we're kind of in the middle ground so far.
And I would just speak for Camp Magical Moments. And Anne, of course, is the director, but we have been in contact with our board in trying to determine what we need to do. And we too decided to wait till the end of April to make a determination.
Yeah, our board's meeting tomorrow, so it could change.
Hi, everybody. This is Mindy Bean from Camp Millennium. We have a situation over here in Oregon where our governor has actually put an executive order out until the end of September for no gatherings whatsoever. So until further knowledge. So if everything turns around sooner than September, we should be able to have camp if we postpone from our June camp to a later in the summer. However, we don't know. And she is error on the side of caution, which is totally fine and everything else, but how to keep going on a consistent month-to-month with the knowledge of possible September, that would just wipe out the whole camp.
Do you have your own campsite?
No. We rent, and I've been dealing with the camp that we rent from. And they're just up in arms also because we're like the first camp session of their season, and then every week afterwards, they are full. But they can't even do anything right now either.
Yeah.
So this could possibly be the very first time that there's no camp, like literally, physically camp. So that's why I'm trying to find out how we could do something, but not be at physical camp, just in case.
Yeah. And that's something, Mindy, that we're going to spend some time later on this town hall really talking about, is how to bring camp to campers when we're not physically there. So definitely something. And just another question, Mindy, is your campsite in the state that you are in?
Yes.
It is, okay.
Yes.
Because that's one thing with my camp that we're now facing is, you know, we're based in New Jersey and the most of our kids come from New Jersey and New York, but the site we rent is in Pennsylvania. So now we're looking at, you know, the governor of New Jersey and the governor of Pennsylvania.
Correct. Well, we're in Oregon and we have some that come from California and some that come from Washington, and we're kind of about in the same boat of what our governors are doing. For this last week, our governor went all the way through the end of September for this. So that kind of, we had just reached out to all the parents again and everything else. And then now I'm like, oh, great, I get to reach out to them again and say, now we're looking at September, but if things turn around, she might lift it. It's just madness. I got my first year in and I'm ready for this. Oh, my gosh. So I could use all the help I can get. That would be greatly appreciated of ideas and anything out there.
Absolutely.
Well, we already have 90 kids signed up for camp.
Wow, okay.
I know.
Is anybody else experiencing anything similar as far as, you know, the thoughts of having to reschedule or even being in a holding pattern for a camp that's, you know, not late in the summer, but early summer?
Benton with Camp Rainbow Gold here. Similar to some of the other experiences, we run a camp in early June and we're just in a holding pattern, trying to wait till May to really decide what we're going to do.
So have, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right.
So those that are in a, in a holding pattern or, you know, thought about canceling or thinking about, has anybody assessed, you know, assessed the availability of if you need to reschedule, if parents and campers are going to be available? Or volunteer staff, if you have paid staff? Or thought about, you know, your medical staff, if they're going to be available? Even if you don't have to reschedule, but in the times that we're in, has anybody looked or thought about the availability for these folks?
This is Anne from Camp Magical Moments. And can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Before, I couldn't, I don't think anyone heard me. I did send an email out this past week to our campers' families and said that we're trying to make a decision by the end of April if we're going to be holding camp. But, you know, we wanted to see, are they willing to send their children to camp? And I had one parent that, whose son is in active chemo and everything, and she said, no, he will not be coming. The other parent said, yes, you know, their child is looking forward to it. And we recently had a camp planning meeting via conference call and, like, one of our volunteers who's in the medical field said, we request the time off for, to do a June camp in January. So the likelihood of the medical personnel being able to get the time off if camp is rescheduled at another time is going to be very slim. So that's something that people may want to consider. Your medical team may not be able just to, you know, come to a camp that may be postponed to a later date.
Hey, Anne, this is Jennifer again from Camp Make-A-Dream. We've definitely been thinking about that, given that we've got programs most of the year. We did cancel two spring sessions, rescheduled a spring session for the fall, canceled a fundraiser, postponed a fundraiser. And right now, we're finding that medical staff, because we draw volunteers from all over, are kind of being told by their centers that they can't travel. And if they do travel, they'll be quarantined when they come back. So that's what we're kind of facing right now, is not all of our medical staff are local. And so, yeah, we're having a hard time with that because a lot of them are being told, you won't be traveling for the next, you know, up to six months.
Well, and everybody's got to think about it, y'all. Until they're, like, Faye brought up a good point. Until there's a vaccination, this virus is still out there. So people that are traveling in, you know, from different areas, they can be bringing it in, and we may have to realize we may not be able to do anything until the vaccination is out.
That's a good point. Any other comments or questions of each other regarding your scheduling and operations or even your availability? Has anybody, you know, that's a good question. And Anne brought it up that she had reached out to families. Has anybody heard any other reluctance to send campers to camp? Or other concerns that may have come up from families that they, you know, they still want to send their kids to camp, however, you know, exonerated?
Matt, this is Ian from Camp Happy Days. One of the things that we're kind of talking about is, so we serve the entire state of South Carolina, but chemo serves just the Columbia area. And one of the things, we want, we have a lot of kids that go to both camps, and one of the biggest worries for us is we're starting to hear families say, you know, you know, we're a little worried about this and getting that from parents, but with Camp Chemo, it's looking like they're going to be postponing their camp. And we're worried about like the perception of them not holding camp and us holding camp and how that'll come off to parents and if that'll affect numbers in that area and such. So that's something that, I know it's kind of a unique situation, but we've got Camp Courage in Greenville and also Camp Chemo that both, they might postpone their camps, but they're directly affiliated with hospitals. So with us not being that and being at a different time, it just is kind of, that's something that I'm kind of hesitant about.
This is Faye from Camp Magical Moments. I think something else that all of us need to think about is if we do hold camp, what is our liability with going ahead with holding the camp, knowing that the virus is still out there? Or will we be held responsible if indeed a staff member or a camper or more become ill because of being at camp?
That's a great point, Faye. And that actually came up in one of our town halls, that one of the camps is now actually trying to get in contact with their insurance carrier to find out about, about if that, if that does come up and that does happen, what, you know, how are they covered insurance-wise and liability? I mean, and that's just medical liability, not even legal or morally.
Faye brought that up because on our board at Camp Magical Moments, we have an insurance person, and he was the one who bought up the liability. That if someone does get sick, we could be held liable. So, you know, just everybody to know that.
Anne, this is Kay. Were they thinking that there'd be more liability than, for example, if somebody got influenza or measles or something you weren't planning for? Just because this is a known virus exposure? I guess in my mind, there's, there's two liability risks. There's whether or not you could legally or medically be held liable from your insurance standpoint, but then there's also the public perception of liability, and that might be the harder thing to have to manage.
Let's put on our Ian Gartner's Markel insurance thing. If we're having to be in a court of law and we're on the stand and somebody is asking us, you knew the coronavirus has been rampant throughout the United States and there is no vaccination, you had a child come to camp, he died from the coronavirus because he has complications, why would you have done that? So in the public court of law, we would be slammed.
Hey, this is Jen with Camp Make-A-Dream. I don't know if my microphone is working. Is it coming?
We can hear you, Jen.
Okay, awesome. We had actually sent out a quick survey to our young adults, just kind of checking in to see what, where they were at and, you know, can put in the different reasons, whether or not they were coming, yes, no, maybe, and if it was a no or a maybe, why? And put in coronavirus as one of the reasons, as well as a variety of other reasons, scheduling and stuff like that. And as of the end of last week, you know, about, the majority of them had said it was a maybe with COVID-19 being a concern. Other parents, when we reached out to them to let them know that we were changing the HUC sessions to the virtual, even though parents hadn't necessarily reached out in advance with any concerns, a lot of them reassured us or responded to via email that it was the right thing to do, so.
And our young adult program, to follow up on what Jen said, is scheduled for June 3rd through the 8th. So it is our very first summer session.
Okay.
So we're struggling with families, but we're also struggling because we have a staff of 15 that we've hired for the season, and we're just sort of stringing them along, you know, saying we don't know as well. So we may be having them join us or we may not.
Hey Jen, I am, I'm not an expert on this, but I'm pretty sure that new bill that was passed, nonprofits can apply for it to be able to pay payroll for people. So you may want to be discussing this with, like, your local bank that you bank with and just to say, what is the criteria, what can we do? Because I believe you can get funding for that.
Yeah. I think for employees, you can, and they haven't started yet, obviously, so I don't know if they're going to fall into a category that we can support them and we may choose to do it anyway. We just don't know. Thank you, though.
For those who are on the call, I just want to message, mention something that Tanya from the Good Times Project posted in the chat, so her microphone's not working currently. But she wanted to let everyone know, as far as holding camp and asking parents, she thought to ask if parents would send campers or not, but ultimately thought that they, the camp themselves, would need to make the responsible choice for the parents, since there's a very emotional attachment. And they also have a very emotional attachment, but also have to think of it from a business side. So that was a comment that was made from the chat room. And I just want to, you know, this is, and we can continue this conversation, but I also want to, you know, kind of transition into, you know, a lot of folks are talking about their volunteers and their staff, so we can spend some time really talking about that part now. So in the pre-survey that went out, the camps that returned the survey were asked if they were confident they would be able to recruit sufficient volunteers. Now, of course, this was sent out, you know, a week and a half ago, and things very well may have changed, as we can hear from the participants today. But 57% said they did feel confident that they would be able to recruit the volunteers. And 48% said that they felt comfortable that they would be able to recruit sufficient medical volunteers. And again, that's obviously before, you know, the, the rest of the mandates that came out from state to state, you know, the CDC guidelines, et cetera. But this was just a little takeaway from the survey that was done. So for those who are still continuing or still thinking, let's talk a bit about our You know, are you still recruiting? And if so, how? If you are conducting interviews, are they, you know, have you used virtual interview programs before? Are you still doing that? And then has anything changed in terms of your way of training? So we'll spend a few moments to talk about that area. Dawn, if you could switch that slide, that'd be awesome.
So this is MJ from Camp Happy Days. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, MJ.
Awesome. So to answer some of those questions, I hope, we are continuing with our staff recruitment just as we would. We're going to send out an email this, this week here to parents and volunteers. We are volunteer-run for counselors and program areas, just explaining that as of right now, we're still continuing to plan for camp and we will reassess on May 1st, I believe, is kind of our deadline for a decision or, you know, public, public announcement about it. With that being said, is we've usually conducted phone interviews from years past, so continuing with that. But then last year, we transitioned from our new counselor training, which was a weekend before, like, a month or so before camp, we transitioned it to the day that our counselors come before our campers arrive. And so while everyone else is kind of setting up camp, since they know what it looks like, we have our new group come in, we just kind of talk about the lay of the land and how things work. So for us, from the side of things for counselors, we're still continuing what we're doing, but just keeping, keeping them at bay, talking about being flexible with dates and things like that.
This is Kim from Camp Casey.
We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Finally made it in. Yes, we are still continuing hiring and for my YMCA camp that I also do all summer, we are also continuing with our hiring, you know, but making the statement that it depends on the government's decision and, you know, other things like that. And then they're actually deciding this week if they're putting me on a hold for my pay and to see if the camp will be open or not, but still hiring with the hopes that we'll be able to open on time.
We've kind of done the majority of our hiring, but we are kind of sending out messages saying that we're kind of holding off on our confirmation process, which is, you know, sort of the next step. So saying that if people need to hear from us, we're happy to go ahead and send them confirmation documents, but if they can hold off until the end of April, that we kind of will start that process then for those later camps. And encouraging people not to buy airline tickets, since a lot of people do that, to join us.
You know, the one thing we did, we told our staff that afforded the same email that I sent to the parents this past week, saying, you know, we're making a decision next month, you know, in April, if we're going to be holding our June camp. But with the staff, because I know some of our volunteers, we have people that fly in from all over, they have already purchased their ticket. So I said in there, and we, as a camp, has, we reimburse half of their airfare if they've been coming to three of our camps or more. So I said, you know, we will visit with the board and make a decision if you've already purchased your airline ticket. Because the one problem with airline tickets, if someone did purchase them by the 1st of March or in February, they're only allowing you to extend that for the year. So if, so even though they may come in June, if this makes sense, they bought their ticket in March, they would only be able to use that ticket until March. So they couldn't hold the ticket for June of 2021. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So Benton from Camp Rainbow Gold posted that we are continuing with volunteer recruitment and using FaceTime, Zoom, and Google Hangouts to conduct interviews. But we have been open with applicants about how, how this far out we are in a wait-and-see pattern in regards to camp, and we'll be following up with updates one way or another as we get closer to summer. So similar to what y'all are saying as well. Any other questions or comments regarding staffing?
This is Mindy again. About the staffing, one of the concerns that I have moving forward, if we happen to be able to maybe move camp till later in the summer, which would be wonderful, except for there's so much shutdown in Oregon right now, that there's so many people who would be our volunteers who are not working, that if they opened up their positions to go back to work, I can't imagine- to work, I can't imagine them asking, oh, can I have time off now, when I've already been off work for two months plus? I'm not sure how that's gonna go.
Yeah, that, here in Ohio, that's one of our biggest discussions as well, knowing that our volunteer base is, is a lot of college students who are, who are not able to do anything at this point, and they need that income when the time comes that they are able to go back. So, yes, similar concerns here at CQ Ohio about having just enough staff to do, because we do a one-on-one pairing with each camper, and just knowing that we do have a lot of teachers and things like that on our staff, volunteers, but we do have a lot of others that aren't, will not be in that position.
If you have, if anyone has any other comments or questions regarding to staffing as we go along, just, you know, obviously just shout them out, or, you know, you can put them in the chat box, and we will address them as well. But to continue on, one other issue that a lot of folks seem to be having right now is with fundraising. And we've had a various, varied response from the camps as far as, as far as fundraising is concerned. So just look to look at these two charts. The first one, the pie chart says, has fundraising been affected by current restrictions? And 58% said yes. The other chart is, is it likely that lack of funds may prevent you from holding camp this year? 72% said no. But there is still that 4% on the chart that said yes, that lack of funding this year could prevent camp. Now, obviously, we know throughout this conversation and all the conversations that we've had, there's a lot of reasons why we may not be able to hold camp this year, but this specific question literally just was about the funding. So to talk for a few minutes about funding and fundraising, and I did hear a few folks already say that they had to cancel a few of their fundraisers. You know, we can talk about, have you had to cancel or reschedule? You know, are folks looking to replace their fundraising activities as far as maybe an outside-of-the-box way of fundraising? A lot of things have been coming up over the past week, that, you know, they're kind of, some camps are switching gears, and instead of trying to fundraise, they're just trying to stay connected with their donors as far as, you know, stewardship and extending, you know, returning the favor and promoting their businesses or promoting their restaurants, what have you. So, you know, we can spend a little bit of time talking about that for. So any ways of talking about fundraising, whether it's, you know, canceled or rescheduled, virtual fundraising, or any other types of connections with your donors and sponsors during this time?
Well, this is Jennifer from Can't Make a Dream again. We were supposed to have our first fundraiser of the year yesterday, and we, oh, at least a month ago, rescheduled it for mid-May, so that very likely will be probably canceled, if not rescheduled, because our biggest fundraiser of the year happens June 20th, and it's a mostly volunteer committee of physicians that help us plan that. And we had a call last week, and they were very reluctant to continue plans or asking for money, because it's a peer-to-peer fundraising kind of platform. So we are trying to keep people engaged with our organization, and it's a cycling event, so we started something that we're encouraging people to ride and log their miles, and we've started a Google Hangout space where they can talk about how many miles they've ridden and things, so that they at least keep, you know, active, and we can be outdoors here in Montana, which is nice. But we have had quite a few of our sponsors pull out of that event, so we're starting to see that. And it's our 25th anniversary this year, so we had many things planned that, you know, we haven't canceled our event, because that's not until October, but we do have a spring campaign that we're kind of waffling on right now.
Tanya, Tanya from the Good Times Project posted that they had to cancel their in-person gala for April 25th date, but they've moved it to an online auction. They'll see how it goes. And she says, thankfully, this funding primarily raises for the next fiscal year and not the current. Hopefully, that does pan out very well for you.
This is with Mindy with Camp Millennium again. We had to cancel a fundraiser in April, May, June, July, August, and that, I can't even begin to imagine how much financial dollars we're not gonna be bringing in from those fundraisers. So thankfully, last year, we were like really gung ho and were able to bank up a whole bunch of money to help out with the loss of revenue this year. And we've been reaching out to all of our donors, just not actually asking for money or anything else, more of just touching base with them and let them know what the, this year's camp is right now, just in a holding pattern, trying to figure out exactly, and that we'll make the decision in May, for sure not if we're going to be able to, because of, you know, the situation in Oregon. And then for all the sponsors for those months for our fundraisers, we've asked if they would like to have their money back, because we were not able to have the fundraiser, and no one has requested their money back. So they will be part of the sponsors of next year also, even though their monies were given this year, if we don't have camp this year, per se, at the true campsite, which they were fine with. So, and then for everybody that has bought tickets this year for events of those fundraisers, we only had one person ask for a refund, and everybody else is just going to keep tickets for either postponement of this year or to use for next year also. Thankfully.
Are there any other questions or concerns about fundraising?
Matt, I did think of one thing. This is Ann. The camp is still something that we should be applying for. You know, the deadline, I think, is April 15. You just all move forward and apply for that. What have you heard?
Yes, I know the Care Camps Board is meeting, I believe, this week in regards to that, but they have said to us to encourage everyone to continue to apply for the grants. They have been talking that, you know, you know, they're gonna still continue to try to award all the grants as much as possible. And, you know, that camps that do not hold camp, those that grant money can be put towards whether they're gonna hold it as a virtual camp, so it's something that they need to, you know, purchase Zoom or, you know, Google Hangouts. Google Hangouts, you know, the nonprofit subscription, so you can get up to 250 people to join Google Hangouts. Karen, for those who don't see Karen, McAndrew is from Care Camps, is actually on with us, and she said the same thing. She said, yes, please do apply. They're meeting tomorrow. We do believe that may, that many of the camps will still be able to provide alternative services, so they would like to be able to provide the funding. So yes, please, please apply for those, the Care Camps Grant. And I honestly would encourage a lot of grant, you know, if you're still writing grants to typical or other organizations, it might be a good idea to still continue those. And just, you know, just because we may not have physical in-person camp, you know, another camp brought this up, camp can look very different to many different people, and a virtual camp is still a camp. And if you are still purchasing t-shirts and you're gonna send it to the campers that were supposed to attend your in-person camp, that's still a camp purchase. And a lot of folks on that call were in agreement that they would continue that kind of process, because camp can, camp can look very different for one another. So, yeah, I definitely, definitely want you to continue to apply for the Care Camps Grant, as well as any other grants that you may be applying for. And just obviously, you know, in the wording, you know, you address that, that issue that camp may not necessarily be in-person, but there are still costs that may occur if you want to go virtual or mail craft projects, et cetera, et cetera, to folks. So, you know, I'd love to actually make that transition and really start to talk about our contingency plans and how we, we can bring camp to campers. So on the next slide, so this, these two charts, excuse me, these two pie charts, so the first one said, if you cannot hold camp this summer, have you developed plans to bring camp to kids? And 43% of the folks that answered the survey said yes. The second chart is, have you considered or made plans to provide virtual programs and services? And 54% said yes. So that's what we'd really love to talk about for a little bit with folks. Maybe you've already started it, maybe you have some done, or maybe this is something new to you that you want to learn. And Coca is definitely in the talks about how to help folks with this, but, you know, if folks are already starting to put things out on their Facebook page or daily social media posts, whether, whether it's now leading up to camp or your plan is to do this in place of camp, onsite camp, I'll be more specific, in place of onsite camp, you're doing virtual camp. Have you thought about video posts, virtual talent shows, or camp in a box where you may be able to send things to the campers during that week? Love to hear your ideas and things that y'all are doing or thinking about.
This is Jen with Can't Make a Dream. So we do have our, three of our sessions that are gonna be going to a virtual camp, but that decision was made towards the end of last week, so it's still pretty new as far as where we are within our planning process for those virtual camps. But we've talked a little bit about, you know, the camp in a box and sending some of the fun things, or maybe some of the supplies that they might need for a project. But then we also kind of talked, at the same time, since we just don't know everything about it yet, to figure out what we're gonna do, we also talked about that that also means we can maybe open up registration to people that wouldn't have been able to come onsite. So we also are kind of talking about what that looks like as far as making sure that it still has that camp feeling, but can maybe include more people, and if it includes more people, then that might change how we handle it.
Hey Matt, this is Ann. So we have not discussed any of this, but if we did virtual, technology challenged. So if you did campfire, or how are y'all saying you do that? Is that like, what did you say, Google Hangout or Zoom, or what, what do people think would be the best avenue to do these?
So a lot of folks, you know, it's varied as to what the needs are of the individual camp, but also the availability for your campers. So I know a good amount of camps currently are doing like Facebook Live videos, where they're just, you know, in front of, whether they're leading songs, they, Kids Need More, In Out in Long Island, has been doing tons and tons of videos. If you actually go to their Facebook page, you can see all of them. They just do live videos where they bring somebody, somebody from their staff goes live, and it may be that they are, you know, cooking something, and you can follow along while they cook. They may have a campfire going and they're leading songs or reading a story. I know with Zoom, if you use Zoom, you can actually set it up where you have a number of people on Zoom, participants on Zoom, and then you can actually create subgroups from that, and take, you know, this group of five over here and slide them into a subgroup, and this five into another subgroup, and then bring them back again. So there's a lot of ways you can play with that. Google Hangouts now for nonprofits, you can have up to 250 people participating at the same time. And that's, you know, just somebody has, you send out the link, and folks log into whether it's Zoom or Google Hangouts, and then you can, you're live, so you can do whatever it is that you do, and everybody can hear and see each other. So one person can lead a song, you know, another person can jump in and lead another song. So it's based really on your needs. One camp did bring up, and I appreciated the fact that they brought it up, was kids in his area specifically don't typically have the, the ability to have a computer or tablet, so doing something online may be more difficult for them. So, you know, they're thinking more outside the box of how to connect to those campers via, you know, camp in a box, you know, sending them items instead, because they may not be able to necessarily log in. But as long as, a lot of folks realize, as long as you have a smartphone, you can still participate in Zoom and Hangouts and go-to meetings and all that kind of stuff as well.
Matt, if you don't mind, this is Don. Ann, I put this up on the chat box, so you didn't see it, but caucus and conversations right now, trying to put together both webinar and a series of workshops with Jack Shaw, who runs a camp upstate New York, and they've been doing virtual camp. They're kind of leading, leading the whole concept of virtual camps. So our hope is that by, by the end of this week or early next week, we'll be able to announce a series of workshops and webinars for those camps that want to learn how to do virtual camp, all the way from production to the nuts and bolts, the technology, or anything else. So keep an eye out for, for some of our emails shortly, in the near future.
So I'll put out there, Tanya in our chat function wrote, for those who can't hear, see it, excuse me, would definitely do a virtual camp replicating what we would have done during each day of camp. Send out a daily agenda to camper families with Facebook component, also looking for a care package company who could create a gift basket for each camper and then mail to them, so they, so they can do the work as with the 200-plus campers. It'd be difficult for us to buy all the stuff, assemble, box and mail, et cetera. Also launching Camp Class, a six-week series of videos and activities sent to campers every two weeks, video component from the counselors, art projects, movies, science projects, et cetera, each curriculum based around a popular camp song. It's pretty cool.
Hey Matt, if she is working, talking to someone about a gift basket, this is Tanya, I know we would say, I'm not, I know she doesn't want to do the work in order for all the camps, but if she could give us that contact information, I think that would be a great idea. Camp Magical Moments would say, we'd love to do gift baskets, and, you know, if they could let us know what they can put on them and everything, we'd be interested in that also, if she could provide us with that contact information.
Great. So Tanya, I know you can hear us, so if you find that company that is able to do that for you, please let us know. And if they definitely want to drum up a good amount of business, I'm sure there's a lot of camps, not just Ann's, right? business, I'm sure there's a lot of camps, not just Ann's, right, that would jump on that. So Tanya said she's still researching, but if she gets a company, she will talk to them about larger quantities and reach out to us. So thank you, Tanya. And good idea, yeah. So another camp, just, you know, a way for folks to connect and, and follow up with other camps. So as I said, Kids Need More Camp Adventure out in Long Island is doing a lot of videos, all on Facebook Live. You can actually visit their Facebook page to see what they're doing. Other camps that I know are doing things that you all, you know, I encourage you to reach out to. You'll also see them when, when you get copies of, of our town halls, their, their information will be there as well. But I know Dave Smith from Camp Fantastic, Special Love in Virginia, just did a campfire, I want to say, two nights ago, also on Facebook. And Camp Ronald McDonald in Southern California just did a huge, like a rock and roll breakfast this past Saturday, also on Facebook Live. So those are camps that you can actually, because they're Facebook Live, you can actually go back to their Facebook pages and view those videos, which might be, you know, helpful in terms of doing some research as to what's out there and what's available. And then obviously utilizing those folks to help guide you through it. So another idea, a couple of things that came through. So we will put this out there to folks. Tanya remind, oh, yeah. There you go. So Tanya said, while researching, this nonprofit creates and sends goodies to cancer patients. It's the Never Give Up Foundation. I know they used it, a lot of folks took advantage of those joy jars that we used to get. That's a great group. And another idea Jennifer posted, another idea that was shared, if you do go virtual, was to actually get your kids involved in the planning, teaching of a virtual activity. It would be a great way for them to take ownership and pride in developing ideas for virtual camp. So might, might also be a nice idea, a nice project for your LIT or CIT group to come up with a few things and then be able to present to your larger camp.
Hey Matt, you talked about the joy jars. We just got our huge shipment in a couple of weeks ago. So that is something that I already thought that we could mail out, even though they're kind of geared towards younger children. But we have our joy jars here, which can be mailed out along with those gift baskets, hopefully.
There you go. Just in case anyone is looking that wants to experience a campfire next, or excuse me, this Thursday, April 2nd, Special Love Camp Fantastic is doing their next campfire. Again, it's Thursday, April 2nd. It's at 7:00 PM, but that is Eastern time. So 7:00 PM Eastern Time on Thursday, April 2nd, Special Love is doing their next campfire. Let's see. Also, Ryan posted a website that sends custom care packages as well. There, it's a Sealed With a Kiss camp. And that website, for those who want to check it out, is www.eswak.com. So it's E-S-W-A-K.com. So they send out custom care packages as well. Great ideas. So as Don said, we are really trying to get as much information as we can from camps and from other organizations that are willing to work with us and willing to help us get this information out to you all. So if there is something that you all are deciding to do, or something that's exciting, that you want to promote, we are more than happy to help you with that and get it out there. We definitely want to share in your success. And then also be able to ask you questions and hopefully replicate the, the successful projects that you're all are working on. So if you are doing a video or something, or you see a video, please feel free to tag us and let us know so that we can put it out there and we can also, to see it and enjoy it as well. Are there any other questions or comments in regards to contingency plans or virtual camps that we could help with at this time? Okay. So at the, at the end of this little slideshow here, and also it's located on our website, there is going to be a brief survey that, we just asked if you could fill it out. It's two parts. The first part is about this town hall specifically, you know, some key takeaways that you had, took from it, as well as the, are there topics from this town hall that you would like more time on, that maybe we would schedule another town hall just focused on that topic. And then the second part is literally, these are our first town halls that Koka has ever done. So we definitely would like feedback just basically also on the format of the town hall. And are there any other topics outside of the virus and the issues that are following with, with that? Are there any other topics you would like us to, to maybe have a town hall on? You know, we'd definitely love to hear all about that. Just for those, as a reminder, we are actually having two medical town halls scheduled. Our first one is this evening. And I just want to get the time, just so I, you know, double check it. So the first one is this tonight. It's a, and correct me, because I'm from Jersey, so I go everything east coast. It is 7 o'clock Eastern Time, 7:00 PM tonight, Eastern Time. And then tomorrow evening, 6 o'clock, East, 6 o'clock, Pacific Time. See, that time I actually did it right. So Monday, 7 o'clock Eastern, Tuesday, 6 o'clock Pacific. And that's one is going to be more medically based. Again, not necessarily talking about the virus itself. However, that obviously will take into account. It'll be a great deal about, you know, the medical staffing needs, screening, and that kind of stuff. It'll be facilitated by myself and Dr. Kay from Campering It On. And we will also be joined each night by an infectious disease specialist that are very familiar with our camps as well. So that's, that's a benefit. So hopefully you or one of your medical staff will be able to join our calls. So we greatly appreciate it. Again, please don't let this conversation end just because our town hall is, is coming to a close. Please email out your questions, stay in contact with one another. Let Don, Jennifer, myself know if we can be of any, any assistance. We'd love to be able to help and give you whatever information we can.
Hey Matt, quick question before you leave. What is the possibility, since we may all know Ian Gartner from Markel Insurance, which we use Markel Insurance, what is the possibility of getting him involved to see what our liability is camp-wise, insurance-wise, having camps, you know, with the coronavirus taking place?
It's a great idea. I'm gonna, I see Jen's head shaking. So I'm gonna put it to Jen and Don to reach out to Ian. We're, we're very familiar with, with him as well. So we'll definitely reach out and get his input. And maybe he'd be interested in leading a town hall as well. So we'll, we'll definitely reach out, Ann. Thank you for that.
Good job. Thank y'all.
Thank you. So are there any other questions or anything before we say farewell? There was a question on the side, I'm sorry. It's geared to Jennifer, but guessing this will affect Gold Ribbon visits this year. So
Yeah, we're, yeah, we just, we're in the email communication with the Gold Ribbon Committee and will be, you know, coming up with, I guess, an answer about what this means for visits this summer and hope to have some information to share with all the camps that are supposed to have the visit this summer. So we will be in contact soon.
So thank you all so, so much for being on the call today. We really appreciate your input. You know, I can say from, from my standpoint, it's wonderful when so many folks join the call because it just means how passionate they are about their camp and their campers. And that, that's wonderful to see and to hear. So thank you all so much for, for your contributions today. It was greatly, greatly appreciated. And as always, please keep yourselves safe and be well. And thank you so much for being here.